I have to call this meeting to order. Debbie, would you please come forward first?
Mr. Hager.
Here.
Mr. Rucker.
Here.
Dr. Coggin.
Here.
Mr. Sneeden.
Here.
Mrs. Danford.
Here.
Mrs. Gruzman.
Here.
Mrs. Hodges.
Here.
And as you noticed, Dr. Coggin is on FaceTime with us this evening. And at this time, I'd like to have the Spring Garden 8th grade girls' basketball team come forward along with Elsie Berry, Thomas Ottinger, and Nick Palmer. And these students will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
By the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our student athletes tonight. I'm going to let Coach Clarity introduce them, but what I really want you to know is that they are outstanding on the basketball court, but more importantly, they're outstanding in the classroom day in and day out. They have made a huge difference for Spring Garden. They are fun to watch, but as I said, more importantly, they are outstanding student leaders. When we started our season, really, to be honest, Mr. McCarthy and I had a long conversation, and really, our biggest worry weren't these girls, but we weren't sure how we were going to take care of all the parents. And they know, and really, I want to publicly thank them. They are an amazing set of parents, and really, we couldn't ask for a better set of parents. And knowing that, that's why we have an amazing set of girls. So I'm going to turn it over to Coach Clarity.
Thank you. I'm going to start with introductions. We've got Sidney Johnson, Maddie Peters, Gabby Fuller, Aliyah Ross, Kristin Wilson, Bailey Russell, Melanie Murphy, and Sabrina Sosa. These girls worked hard all season, on and off the court. They went undefeated this year, won both the Bodie and Savannah tournaments, and they were privileged to get to know and coach this year. And like Dr. Gilpin said, they're a great group. I'd also like to thank the parents, too. Without them, it wouldn't have been possible. Thank you.
Let me just add a couple of things. First of all, this team is unbelievable. I've seen these girls since they were like 3rd grade, and they were really talented. They've got a lot of talent, but they're very, very hard workers. And I got to see them play a couple of times this year, and they were sensational. I'll tell you what, St. Joe is going to have some state championships coming to us because I tell you, the Bodie team was just awesome, and I know Rubidu and Truman are good, too, but this is a special group. Undefeated season, great players. Probably, from what I saw, they're at least a JV caliber team in the 8th grade, which is unusual, and that's why they're undefeated. And I just wanted to add, I'm glad that Ms. Gilpin said something about the Paris, because without them, you know, we shuffle them to practice and all those nights in offseason practice workouts, overbetting, shooting. They wouldn't be there without that extra work. And there are three dads I want to call out here. I hope I don't embarrass you. Matt Murphy, is he here? That guy right there. Don't let him get away. That's the ringleader right there. The only dad that I've seen for years with this team is Stevie Ross. He's high in the pack. And then, the other dad is Gabe Sosa. He's played a lot of time with these girls. Thank you. It just doesn't happen, but it takes a true leader to be able to take an All-Star team and get the job done. Congratulations. This was a great group, and I'm so proud of them. They're great ballplayers, let me tell you. Which one of you guys is 22? Which one? Oh, there she is. I have no point. I mean, I can't tell you, you know, Aliyah Ross, I'm pretty favorable to her because she's a weightlifter, but that little girl gets all the rebounds. Yeah, they're all good. Sosa's good. All these big girls are really good. I can't tell you how great they are. Good luck the rest of your careers, and we'll be watching, okay? Thank you.
The next student we want to recognize tonight is Elsie Berry, and Mr. Johnson is going to say a few words about her.
Elsie, would you please come forward, please? And although, Elsie's already up here, here we go. And also, Dr. Stevens, our principal at Central High School. Where are you? I know you're in the room this evening.
Thomas.
Would you come on up as well, too? I know it's kind of a tough thing to get up here, so. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, and distinguished members of the board, and all of the guests and the staff that are here this evening. So I'm here this evening representing the Heartland Foundation. And the Heartland Foundation is an educational opportunity created on a regional basis throughout northwest Missouri. And tonight, we want to recognize Elsie Berry, who's a sophomore this year at Central High School. So here's what we charged Elsie with last summer as an intern with the Heartland Foundation. And we have a program called Character Education within the Heartland Foundation. And so most schools in St. Joseph and certainly throughout the region are receptive to this program. So what this program does is talk about soft skills, if you will. And in the workplace today, we have a number of employers throughout the region who have indicated that, you know, it's one thing to learn about math, and it's another thing to learn about science and all the various things, but it's also important to know the soft skills that go along with that, because that makes a productive and motivated employee throughout the workplace. So our charge with Elsie was to come up with posters, if you will, for each respective month. So the things you see listed on the board here and also on the backboard as well, too, are things such as citizenship and compassion, confidence, all the things that are necessary to make a complete student, as well as the opportunity to enter the workforce with those kinds of things. I have employers all the time who say, you know, we can hire folks with those hard skills, but the soft skills are oftentimes the things that are missing there. So it's our pleasure to honor Elsie this evening. One of the things that happened in most of the elementary schools in the St. Joseph School District is that 5th and 6th grade students often coach the rest of the other elementary classes in this particular process. So it's a great leadership opportunity as well, too. So on behalf of the Heartland Foundation, and Mr. Rucker, it looks like you're going to do the presentation here this evening, so we want to thank Elsie for all of her efforts over the summer in developing our new poster program. These, by the way, can be downloaded on the Heartland Foundation's website, so that they have access to any one of our schools throughout, not only St. Joseph, but throughout the region as well. So Martin, we'll turn it over to you.
On behalf of the St. Joseph School Board, we'd like to congratulate you, present you with your plaque. And I just want to say, you know, these are types of things that we hear all the time, as Mr. Johnson said, as employers are looking for. And for you to take the bull by the horns, put it there in plain sight so everyone can see it, we love that.
Dr. Stevens is also going to present and honor our next candidate, and that's Thomas Ottinger.
Yes, step forward, Thomas. Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to bring Thomas Ottinger before you again this evening. As some of you may remember, Thomas was here last fall as he was introduced for having a perfect 36 score on his ACT. So tonight, tonight I introduce Thomas to you as a candidate for the United States Presidential Scholars Program. And I'm going to read you just a bit about that. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established in 1964 by executive order of the President to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished graduating seniors. In 1979, the program was expanded to recognize students who demonstrated exceptional scholarship and talent in the visual, creative, and performing arts. Annually, up to 141 students are chosen from outstanding graduating seniors to become U.S. Presidential Scholars, one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. Scholars are chosen on the basis of their accomplishments in many areas: academic and artistic success, leadership, and involvement in school and community, and they represent excellence in education and the promise of greatness in America's youth. They are invited to Washington, D.C. in June to participate in National Recognition Program, featuring various events and enrichment activities, and culminating in the presentation of the Presidential Scholars Medalion during a White House-sponsored ceremony. Currently, Thomas is captain of the Central High School Scholars Bowl, and you probably see them out on Twitter. They're really kicking it this year. And as a member of the math club, for fun, Thomas enjoys web programming. His future plans attending would be to attend Brigham Young University with a major in Actuarial Science, which is a branch of the Statistics Department. I think it is nice to notice that Thomas is a product of the St. Joseph School District. He attended Bessie Ellison, Holman Elementary, Bodie, and now he's a part of our central family. I would also like to recognize Thomas's mother and father, if they're here.
Yes.
There they are. Good job on that. Congratulations, Thomas, and good luck.
Thomas, on behalf of the St. Joseph School District, I want to say that you're going to act for science, but that name has a doctor's ring to it, doesn't it? So if you change your mind and be a doctor, come back home.
Our final student we want to recognize tonight is Mr. Nick Palmer, and he is a Benton High School student, and Mr. Barry Johnson, Principal of Benton High School, is here to tell us a little bit about Nick.
Well, Nick's getting used to coming before you, Board. He was just here, when was it, last meeting maybe, or the week before? He was part of the award-winning team for the Entrepreneurship Challenge, and so he's quite a good student. He is going to graduate at the very top or very near the top of his class. He's a very hard worker. He's a very upstanding young man that has high morals and good values, so he's someone we can all be proud of. Nick has, I think last summer, attended a week-long leadership training at both West Point and Annapolis, and he has decided a couple of years ago to really go for a nomination to go to a service academy. He was nominated by both Senator McCaskill and Congressman Graves. He was Congressman Graves' primary candidate to be put forth towards West Point, and last week was chosen by West Point to attend there, so we very happy. Also, there's Bill and Tony, are you all back here? Parents back here, want to recognize them. So congratulations, Nick, Mr. Rucker.
I don't know, ladies and gentlemen, whether to bow down, salute, or what, but I will tell you, standing here today, I've been proud of all three of our honorable students, and I hope you are, too, and this is just a tip of iceberg of the academic success of our students at St. Joseph School District. Let's give them a hand.
Any of our guests this evening, if you were here in support of your student, you are free to leave if you wish. You're welcome to stay, though. And at this time, we'll do audience participation. Just a reminder, you have five minutes. Can you?
Jeff Leek.
Call me.
Yes.
I hate to follow all the great awards with a serious note, but that's kind of what I came to do. Members of the Board, I thank you for the opportunity of speaking this evening. My name is Jeff Leek, NEA representative, teacher, and parent in the St. Joseph School District. I come here tonight to share a few thoughts. About this time every year, I have good intentions of getting ahead of the game and filing my taxes early. With an extra business on the side, it takes a little longer. Each year, I have plans on how to spend the return I may get. The goal every year is to put some in savings and maybe put a little aside for a family trip. The reality is usually we have to pay some bills that have accumulated over the past year. And like earlier today, I found out that my son's going to have to have a lot of dental and orthodontic work, so that's where most of my return is going to go. The parents in the room have paid for braces. But that's life. Regardless, my wife and I sit down and decide how we can best use this money for our family in the future. Notice there was no mention on what I was going to buy for myself. There is not even a possibility that I use this money towards a new vehicle, another TV, or personal belongings. My point being this, and to beat a dead horse, forget about the legality and the procedure of last year's stipend bonuses and all that has went on with that. And this is not an attack on administrators. We have many good administrators, working extremely hard, and like others in the district, deserve the most we can afford. What bothers me is simple. We had an extra quarter of a million dollars last year that we could spend. And I don't know, but our first thought to me wasn't how we could best help the community and students. It was, how can we divvy this up? Forget about how we could help our homeless students, poverty students, or special needs students, or how we could institute more after-school programs, activities, tutors, or classroom help. Let's give bonuses. That's what truly upsets me. $250,000 is a lot of money. Now, we divided that into $5,000 chunks for our top administrators, and I'm sure they put the money to good use on whatever they wanted to buy, save, pay for college education, and all that. But I guarantee that money doesn't have the same impact on students that it could have had. For years at Lafayette, we'd have had adopt a student for Christmas. We would spend about $50 on coats, jeans, and personal hygiene products. And I remember how much difference that $50 made. We could have done that for $5,000 still, if that's how we chose to spend our money. We have a pattern of helping ourselves, our own, and our friends. We are led in the district by a family that makes around $300,000, followed by many more with six-figure salaries. We have passed a salary schedule with bonuses very generous to our administrators, and we have brought in groups like OPA and Flip Flippin'. We have to ask ourselves, are expectations of investments being met? As we are spending our money, are we doing it the best way possible? In a small business, the consequences of decisions are felt directly, good or bad. But when we, as a district, make a decision, who feels the consequences? Do we take the time to gauge their effectiveness? Do we listen to those that are affected? Some say we should only focus on the positive and not the negative, that I'm looking at the glass half-full. But we cannot only focus on the positive at the expense of reality. The reality is, we are heading into some rough times, but I am positive we can make it through stronger than before. I see a district that can be so much more. There are many improvements that we can make as a district. Some challenges have simple solutions. Some have some that are much more complex. But all these solutions can be achieved. Unfortunately, we're not able to focus on many of these challenges at this point, as we are too overwhelmed with other distractions. At some point in time, we must shift the focus on what's best for us as individuals to what is best for our students and our community. Thank you.
Todd Brockett.
Thank you for your time. I'm Todd Brockett, NEA president. It's deeply, it's a humbly experience to speak for the food service workers, and if you would please rise, I want to see who I'm speaking for here. This is a challenge for me. As a teacher, it's difficult. I have the greatest admiration for these people. Through the years, I used to have a lock-in where we'd bring in people and have the students, things done for the students. My cafeteria workers at Rubidu would come in on their own time, serve the kids. They weren't getting paid for it. The kids knew them all by name. It was amazing. They knew their families. They knew everything, if they could, about the kids when they came through. It was that little bit of encouragement that they did not sometimes receive at home. They are professionals, food service professionals, not an hourly worker that with no benefits that is simply looking at it as a paycheck to feel a little bit on the side. As Mr. Leek said, it's more than that. It's more than just a few hours of work a few days a week. With that said, it's been very difficult for me to explain to them the way the workings in the districts are. The best way I could describe it is, it's like a Picasso painting. Why does the arm come outside of the head? I don't know. It's Picasso. Why does the ear sit in the middle of the chest? I don't know. It's Picasso. At the same time, when I try to explain to them the way the workings are in the district, I have no way of explaining it. Why is it that in 2010, these professionals turned a profit in our school district? Why is it in 2010, they turned a $330,000 profit, leaving a balance that year of $724,000, and now when I hear that they don't get to hear their voice inside of a committee meeting, and they're accused of being lazy? They don't want to try? I'm appalled by that. It's a vendor. It's not part of our family. A businessman I once knew that I really respected said, "You use your vendors, but you treat your family with respect," meaning your business family. Why is it that we're allowing a company like OPA to come in here and jump into our family and split our family? These people are not part of that. It's clear that these same people can turn a profit. It's clear this can be done. I know the times are tough. I know they're rough, but at the same time, these people deserve respect. To have someone come in and have a single say, and not have them have any representative at these committee meetings, at board meetings, and just to hear one side of the story is wrong. They deserve everything else. They deserve the right to a living wage. I've heard many people say, "I stand for a living wage." Well, it's time to put the rubber to the road. Either we do or we don't stand for a living wage. For them to say, "Just give them a few hours in the morning to kind of make ends meet, give them no benefits," that's outrageous. That puts us in the same company that we always criticized, for instance, Walmart, just a few hours to make ends meet. What if they are professionals? What if they are people that truly care about kids? Do we want to hire part-time people to fill those positions? I hope not. From my perspective, what these ladies and gentlemen are asking for is simple. They're asking for a voice. They don't have one. They hear OPA's side, and that's all we hear. They're a business. They're a business. When you go to buy a car, do you listen to the salesman and simply say, "I trust that salesman"? None of us do that. At the same time, OPA is a business to turn a profit, 7%. Around 7%, or they're not in business. If they're turning 7%, how about if we take that 7% and reinvest it back into our people? Again, this is Picasso. I don't understand it. I'm hoping someday that we can complete this painting, so it makes sense. I never liked Picasso. It never made any sense to me. It frustrated me. I'm more organized than that. I hope that we have more professionalism in our district than to paint our district with that type of a brush. Our students don't understand it. Our staff doesn't understand it. We, the staff, have no voice at this point, and that's what we're asking for. And again, I would ask this Board to strongly reconsider the renewal of OPA's contract. I know it's late. I know it's a late time, and it's a tough time, but you have to remember, when Dr. Martin Luther King went to Memphis, he wasn't fighting for civil rights. He was fighting for a living wage. Please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Kathy Shorebet.
Hello, I'm Kathy Shorebet. I'm the manager of Central's Kitchen. I've been an employee of the St. Joseph School District for 22 years. I want you to know I love my job. I love the students of this district. These women, they're represented here, love these students. This is why they do the job. Our children go here. Our grandchildren go here. I was a student here in this school. I went to Lindbergh, Rubidu, and Lafayette, and now I manage the biggest kitchen in the district, and I love my job. I want you to know something, and please listen. In spite of anything you've heard from OPA, that we are lazy, that is, I cannot tell you what that does to people. I see my women holding 50-pound bags of flour and lifting and carrying things that some men couldn't even do, and they call us lazy. When I heard that, I cannot tell you what that did to me. I've done this job for 22 years, and it's a backbreaking job. It's a sweaty job, and you couldn't get people to do it. And OPA has people in here coming in at three hours a day. No benefits, nothing for them. And I feel bad for these people. They deserve a living wage. I do not like the fact that the Board would bring into this city a company, knowing the poverty in this city and the children that we serve. I'm a mother of those children. Those jobs that you give us, they've supplied benefits to our children. These women that are working, the grandmothers that are working, they're not getting a good wage. They're not getting the money that they need to raise a family. The benefits you give them, or gave me and gave me all through these years benefited my children, so that benefits the people of St. Joseph. I just thank you for listening to me. I thank you, and I want to say this, I am so proud of these women that come in and work every day under what we've had to work under. You do not know what we have had to work under. No one has asked us, "How is this going for you?" I just thank you for your time, and please reconsider. Please, I ask you to please reconsider that the contract with OPA, because we have a wonderful department of ladies and gentlemen that are intelligent, that know the guidelines that the government is handing down. We are not unknowing of that. We were taught well. We had a good director at one time. We went through some bad times with directors, but we had a good one that was always looking forward. We need to hire someone like that again to come in and lead this department, because we can make money. We're the only department in this district that has ever made money, ever. Again, thank you for listening, and thank you for your hard work of you serving the St. Joseph School District and the children of St. Joseph. Okay, thank you.
Katie Schwartz-Drowns.
Hello, I am Katie Schwartz-Drowns, and I am representing the St. Joe MSTA and the Community Teachers Association. This is the time of year when leadership changes. We're preparing to select new MSTA leadership, and our NEA colleagues are doing the same. Although we will not elect new board members this spring, it is inevitable that some leaders may move, retire, or leave education completely. This time of year also brings student council elections, my own speech and debate officer elections, as well as dozens of other student- and faculty-led organizations. Each of us is a leader, whether we like it or not. Each of us is a leader, whether we like it or not. Whether we're on the school board, make decisions about snow days, or lead a classroom of 30-plus students, there are always people looking to us for our expertise. I'd like to share with you a reading by Earl Rumm that I share with my brand-new speech and debate officers every year. I sincerely wish you will have the experience of thinking up a new idea, planning it, organizing it, and following it to completion, and having it be magnificently successful. I also hope you'll go through the same process and have something bomb out. I wish you could know how it feels to run with all your heart and lose horribly. I wish that you could achieve some great good for mankind, but have no one know about it except you. I wish you could find something so worthwhile that you deem it worthy of investing your life. I hope you become frustrated and challenged enough to begin to push back the very barriers of your own personal limitations. I hope you make a stupid, unethical mistake and get caught red-handed and are big enough to say those magic words, "I was wrong." I hope you give so much of yourself that some days you wonder if it's worth it at all. I wish for you a magnificent obsession that will give you a reason for living and a purpose and direction in life. I wish for you the worst kind of criticism for everything you do, because that makes you fight to achieve beyond what you normally would. I wish for you the experience of leadership. As the conversations swirl of levies, budget cuts, contracts, audits, RIFs, administrative leave, and elections, I hope that we can each take time and reevaluate why we do what we do. Are you in education because you want to take a radical stand? Are you here to push some personal agenda? In the words of the ever-famous Marshawn Lynch, "Are you only here so you don't get fined?" Or are you here because you care deeply about the 11,455 students that walk in and out our doors every single day? How much time do you spend talking to students? When was the last time you walked into a classroom firmly believing every single student in that room could and would become a successful, productive member of society? We have spent and continue to spend so much time slinging mud at one another and proving how much more we care about students and faculty than the other guy, that we've lost our focus as leaders. For the sake of the students in St. Joe, we have to write that course. What leadership lesson are we teaching our students? I have never once brought up any turmoil in our district within any of my classes, but the students ask about it frequently. They're learning that it's acceptable for leaders to air one another's dirty laundry, bash each other in the media, and leak information that should be protected by confidentiality. The core principles of the St. Joseph School District include expecting a culture of excellence, ensuring integrity of actions, the commitment to quality teaching and learning, nurturing connections through collaboration and communication, and providing a safe learning environment. Ask yourself, when was the last time you intentionally spent time ensuring the students of this district had a safe, warm, loving place to come every day? Ask yourself, when was the last time you experienced leadership?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any questions? Debbie, please call the board.
Mr. Haggard?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mr. Sneedon?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Okay, are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull two items. I'd like to pull item 5.7, the IB classes, and item 5.13, OPa, the food service management program. I move that we accept the consent agenda with those two removed.
Second.
Debbie, please call the board.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mr. Sneedon?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Haggard?
Yes.
Okay, 5.7.
5.7. This board heard concerns about the International Baccalaureate Program at last month's meeting and at last week's Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting. In addition to briefly sharing about these new courses, I've asked Dr. Sandy Stegall to share her next steps with those questions and concerns. Dr. Stegall? As she comes up to the podium, I want to thank her for her willingness to look at these questions and to take the time to evaluate what is going to be best for all of our students.
Good evening. At this time, it is my recommendation to go ahead and approve the three curriculums that we brought to you during the committee meeting. With that being said, I think it's also important to do a program evaluation over the entire IB program this spring, so you guys can get a comprehensive look at the program, and we can report back to our community exactly what that program entails and how it benefits our students.
What were the three classes again, Sandy?
Yes, IB, 20th Century, American History class. It's moving from a one-year to a two-year higher-level course. We are phasing out the two-year European History HL course and are going to offer psychology instead. And then, the only additional class would be the IB Sports Exercise and Health Science class. And these will be available for all juniors and seniors.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No, I'm really glad to hear we could do a program evaluation and find out some of the answers to the questions that, that we had. I think that's terrific.
Thank you so much for wanting to do that. No problem.
And we look forward to that program evaluation possibly sometime this spring.
This spring, yes. That's what we're going to shoot for.
Thank you, Dr. Stegall.
Thank you.
Okay, so I move that we approve the new International Baccalaureate classes. Second. There's lots of seconding. We'll be bound to Chris.
Any other questions, comments?
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Sneedon?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Haggard?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Okay, 5.3, uh, 1.3.
I did not know that there were going to be so many nutrition service workers here tonight. And I thank you for coming, and I thank you for sharing your concerns. Everyone needs a voice, and what we need to do is to take that voice and figure out what our next steps are. So it kind of changed what I had written earlier because of what was shared tonight. As I mentioned at last week's finance committee meeting on Friday, the concerns that I hear the most as a board member come from nutrition services. There's unhappiness and frustration with the perceived lack of communication, respect, and value. There have been recent discussions that I believe are first steps in addressing those concerns that I hope will result in resolution for all. By the sheer numbers of people here tonight, because I think, I think it's one thing to, I think it's one thing to say something, I think it's another thing to show up and to make your presence known to the school board, to the media, and to this community with your concerns. So what I would like to do with that is, I'd like to make the motion to postpone the approval of this contract for next year, so there are time to address these questions and concerns that the people in nutrition services have as soon as possible. Now, what I'm making the motion to is not to approve it tonight, but to get those, get those discussions going and come up with a plan that hopefully can be brought back to the board at the March meeting, to see where, where we need to go from there.
Mr. Haggard? Ms. Danford, I think from the problematic procedure, you should postpone it to a date certified to the March meeting rather than just to postpone.
Oh, I did, but I, I, I kind of went around the course there. So how about I'll say that I'd like to postpone this approval till the March meeting. Is that a motion? With, I know I want to add to it again. I'm not going to add anymore, but I wanted the piece that, it's not just postponing it. What I want is so that the questions and concerns that, that the employees have are addressed, and that there is a plan to go forward. So that's the motion? Yes, that's the motion. Okay, can I second?
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, Debbie, please call the board.
Mr. Sneedon? Dr. Cogan?
No.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Haggard?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
So before we go on, I think it's important to note that if there are concerns that anyone has, and they don't feel like they're being addressed, that is why we're here as a school board, to provide oversight. Now, there is a board policy that does state about communication between the board and employees. But if you go back to that board policy, it talks about official reports. And we certainly do not want you jumping over anyone to bring an official report. We also want you, if you, if anyone has a concern, to go the chain of command. I don't think any, any principal wants to be surprised that a teacher jumped over them and didn't talk to them, or, or any supervisor. I mean, I think that's important to do. I think that's professional to do. But I think if you feel like you've done that, and no one is listening to your voice, then I think keep going up. That, that's, that's why we're here, so.
We, we can meet with you afterwards.
I just have one comment. I don't work for the school district, but a lot of these ladies don't know who they report to. Are they school district employees, or are they OPa employees? Are they OPa's telling them they work for them?
All right, item 6.1. The bid items for the whiteboards, bulletin boards.
Good evening, Dr. Long, members of the board. Approximately 10 years ago, the maintenance department began to replace all the blackboards, chalkboards with magnetic whiteboards, markerboards. The last time we purchased this, these items was about four years ago, and we've been out of those items for two years now. We recently received bids from two vendors. If you, if you look at the sheet in front of you, I think that I need to explain to you about the freight. Now, understand that these items are very heavy, and so we had to be very specific about how we had these delivered. And so, not only are they heavy, hard to handle, but they, they take up a lot of space as well. So both vendors addressed the freight differently. School specialties included the freight in their prices, where if you look at, now this only pertains to just the whiteboards, not bulletin boards. SSI, they added $12 per whiteboard for freight. Okay, so, we have two different sizes of whiteboards. One is four by 12. The low bid is SSI, $24,101. For four by eight whiteboards, school specialty is the low bid, $8,381.85. Also bulletin boards, four by eight, the low bid is $5,092.50, that's SSI. And then finally, we have the cork railboards. And also, SSI is low on that, at $2,116. So I would recommend that we accept the low bids from those two companies.
I need a motion that we accept those low bids?
I'll second.
Any questions for Mr. Hillcott?
So we buy a whole bunch of boards, right, so that we can get the lowest price?
That's correct.
And then distribute them over time?
That's correct. So if we, if we take this bid, I'll have approximately 151 whiteboards in stock. Now, I base that upon current requests, anticipated future needs, and, and storage. They do take up a lot of space.
So you can't have too much?
So, that's correct. So over two years, I have approximately 80 requests for whiteboards. So I should have enough to go for a while.
A little bit, great.
And this also includes garden park and Oak Grove. For, I mean, they really only have five requests for whiteboards. They have about 60 requests for bulletin boards.
Uh, yes, they do bulletin boards. Yes, indeed.
Any other questions?
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Haggard?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneedon?
Yes.
Dr. Long?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hillcott.
Well, it has, it's certainly been a busy couple weeks here in the school district, and doesn't have any signs of slowing down. As many of you know, the State Auditor will be here next Tuesday, the 17th, at 5:00 p.m. at Oak Grove, on which, after the delivery of his audit, we will, we will release our audit communication plan to our community and how we're going to continually update them on the progress that we're being made, based on the recommendations that they give us and our response. The, I know that it's been discussed through the administration of the Board of Education that trying to schedule a work session to, to pave the path for that, and so we look forward to doing that. With the State Auditor's office presenting next Tuesday, that presents that their 90-day follow-up would come somewhere towards, towards the end of May, sometime in June, which is important for us, especially with the, with the potential valid issue in August, to have, to have that progress being made, and for us to be able to address those recommendations, because he will also come back and deliver another report after, based on how we progress through the recommendations. So I think that that is important. The timing's working out well for the district as far as delivery, and then some of the deadlines that we have to meet down the road. But we, for any of the community members that want to follow the progress, I would make sure that you follow our website, because we will make that, make that live after the auditor presents. And we want, we want to, our community, to stay involved and follow us in how we're progressing through those recommendations. Would like to recognize Deanna Kelly, the counselor at Pickett. She returned last week from Washington, DC, and was selected as an American School Counselor Association. I believe she was recognized at our last board meeting, but we want to make sure that she, it was a very big deal, and hope that she enjoyed her time. Last week was also National Counselors' Week, and want to publicly thank all the counselors for the work that they do, because they do have a tremendous part in our students' educations. Also want to point out that nominations are wanted for Teacher of the Year, Support Person of the Year, Innovator, Innovator of the Year, Volunteer of the Year, deadlines, and these deadlines are also listed on our website. So anybody that wants to nominate somebody for those positions, you can find out more information on our website. We do have about 20 students that are going to the 2015 Youth Advocacy and Leadership Summit in Jefferson City?
Jefferson City, please.
All right. And, and so they are going down on President's Day. We have no school, so we did have 20 students that were willing to do this on their, on their day off, that will interact with the, with just legislators. Despite the continuing adversity that the district continues to face, we, we are pushing hard and striving to maintain our focus, and we're doing so through establishing 30 and 60-day, 30, 60, and 90-day goals, to ensure that work is getting done, to ensure that our kids are being taken care of. And I can tell you that we have a phenomenal group of teachers, of building principals, and folks that come here to 925 Felix every single day, that regardless of what's going on, they, they come to work with great attitudes and are keeping anything from, from disturbing the level of education that our kids are given. So I just can't thank them enough for the work that we're doing. I'll end on, the red and green are going head-to-head here in just a few minutes up to the north, so invite anybody to go up to Lafayette and enjoy the best.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Teacher meeting day is next. Any questions on that? Karen Nen?
No questions.
No questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So who? A two-year.
To go into closing.
Second.
Bill Gabor.
Yes, I should got it. Something got caught in my throat. It wouldn't get out.